Meetings are televised every day on Channel Two at 6:00 PM at midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. This is a study session for Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. Proposals for 600 Cherokee Street redevelopment.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, tonight you'll be receiving two presentations to purchase and redevelop 600 Cherokee Street. These are the two responses to the RFP that was published in January. Each presentation will be followed by a time for the Commission to ask questions of the applicants. As you know, it's the study session format, which means that no decision on which proposal should move forward is requested tonight. The request to select a proposal will be scheduled for a future meeting. If there's no questions for me at this time, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Emily Duffner to present her team and her proposal.
Hi.
Hello.
So, my name's Emily Duffner. I grew up in Leavenworth. I attended, well, I grew up outside, in between Easton and Leavenworth, and attended Salt Creek until third grade, and then the Leavenworth Catholic Schools through, from fourth grade through graduation.
Okay.
And our proposal, my husband is an architect, I'm an architectural engineer, and our proposal for the property at 600 Cherokee is the mixed-use Blue Stem Gallery. I'll go through briefly our proposal, just very quickly, because I know you're eager to hear what we have suggested, and then I'll go through in more detail the team we've put together, our experience, both personal and professionally, a bit more on the project details, and then I would also like to introduce one of our partners, which is LV Arts, and then we'll follow up with questions. So, I have a timer, I hope, try and keep it brief. So, this is the model of the site. We were proposing on the top floor to have loft residential apartments. We believe, yeah, this shows four smaller apartments, and on the first floor, we would like to propose small office spaces and a contemporary art gallery. The existing site on Sixth Street would, the former Mike CDs would be, yeah, we've put in three individual offices, and then the entire ground floor of the main building would be essentially half gallery space and half meeting room, office, and then amenities as well. And what's interesting about the site, too, is we propose a courtyard, an open courtyard for the back, to kind of open that site up to the alleyway and to provide, it works really well with the gallery and with the office spaces, too.
I was gonna say, that's the gallery back there, and you can go out to the courtyard.
Exactly, yeah, so kind of a large, openable door here that can, then, in nice weather, be used to extend that open space, really. And essentially, our vision is to take it from what it is now to, yeah, the Blue Stem Gallery with continuing some of the themes that we see in the downtown at the moment with art murals, a welcoming, open-corner, active office space, and then this is the entrance to the gallery on Cherokee Street. So, who are we? This is my family. We, as I said, I grew up in Leavenworth, but we have two kids, we live in Arizona. We just moved to Arizona a couple of years ago from Germany. My husband is German, and, yeah, our kids are Jonah and Ellie, age six and three. We started our own company. My husband and I have been working for larger firms, and we started a company when we moved to Arizona. My husband also has his own company, I'll go through that in a little bit more, and we are proposing to, yeah, be the property developers to manage the building development and site, and then we would also, once it's finished, we would pull in a property management company, such as Green and My Rentals, and we've been, I went to school with Jeremy, so we've been speaking about, yeah, what does the market need, you know, what does he think of the proposal, et cetera, just to get that local knowledge, what kind of rents are reasonable, what can we expect when the project is finished, what does it cost to renovate it, et cetera, and then we would also, really passionate about art-led regeneration and cultural projects, and so we've been speaking with newly-formed LV Arts. They'll talk to you a little bit later about their organization and how we think that could fit together with the building. And then I met, I was talking to them earlier, but I met today with Axis Construction, they're a Kansas City-based firm, who is, they've done a lot of work in kind of historic renovation. They've done a lot of buildings at the crossroads in Kansas City, and they're just very interested also in redeveloping historic properties and others. This is just a start of the kind of local network that we would like to build. So, personally, I grew up out in Easton, first on a five-acre farm, and then later on a 240-acre farm, and, yeah, I loved it. We had pigs.
Real pigs, huh?
Yeah, we later, I don't have pictures of cows and sheep, but we, my mother is a botanist, she taught at Saint Mary College, and...
Who's your mother?
Jean Emerson.
Oh, of course.
Of course.
No, I know who you are.
Is that good or bad? I don't know. Sorry, so, something that's really close to my heart is that my mom, when we moved to Kansas, my father was in the military, my, a lot of personal information, but when my parents divorced, my mom moved out to the, to Easton and bought a farm, and she wanted to redevelop land. She's a botanist, not a farmer, but that was her spirit of how do you make places better? And that's where we came up with the name of Blue Stem Gallery. She took land that was not farmable and redeveloped it and joined the, what it's called, there's a program where if you plant native grasses and redevelop land, you get, the government helps you with that effort, and I just, I grew up with a strong feeling that it's our role to make places better. So, I studied engineering, and my husband's an architect, and we like to do buildings. So, I, that's my brother in the truck there, and we grew up, yeah, going, again, going to school in Leavenworth. One of the other most amazing things about Leavenworth, I think, is this global-local exposure that you have growing up. So, I, although I grew up in a small town on a farm, I went to school with people from all over the world, and my sophomore year, I followed a very good friend of mine, and I lived with her family in Australia for a year. So, her dad was in the Australian Army, we became best friends, and we couldn't imagine being apart, so I went to live with her family for a year, and it really just changed my life, and I think I wouldn't have had that experience had I not grown up in Leavenworth. And it was, as you see, it's quite different to where we grew up. I worked on this little, there was a little kiosk here, that was my, you know, part-time job was working at the beach, and, yeah, it was just a really formative experience. I came back my junior year, graduated high school, we played volleyball, and then, this is our senior class, and the reason I bring all this up is I moved away after college, I went to college at K-State, but when my husband and I moved back to the States, we were having our 25th reunion, and I said to him, "Hey, you know, do you want to go to Kansas?" And we, my parents had moved to California, and they retired in California and then in Arizona, and he'd never seen, he'd never been to Kansas, and so, and I looked, and I couldn't believe that our high school was now a hotel, et cetera, et cetera. So, we came back last year to our reunion, and, that's my husband, we just really fell in love with downtown. We thought it was amazing, there's, what we felt, living in places like Berlin and San Francisco, was we felt there was a really nice vibe and a really nice spark here, and it wasn't, it wasn't trying to be cool, if that makes sense, or it was just evolving. And so, we caught up with old friends, we played in the arcade, we had coffee and donuts at Merryweathers, and we just thought, what a wonderful place, and there's something special here. There was a sense of humor everywhere, there was just a sense of community. We have small children, so we thought this is particularly great, and we just loved it. I love the old theater, it's really nice how everything has been maintained, and there's a spirit to, to really keep that spirit intact. Again, Saint Mary is very close to my heart because I kind of grew up there, running the halls, as my mom was a single parent, a full-time teacher, and this is her greenhouse at the edge. Yeah, and then we went out to the farm where I grew up, and then the people that bought our farm have, took it, yeah, it was a really beautiful experience because they, they, my, I guess our family put a lot of love and effort into it, but they did the same thing for the next 25 years, and when we went out that day, their daughter was getting married on the farm, but they welcomed us in, and my husband couldn't believe it, he couldn't believe, he kept saying, "Where are we?", because people were just continually opening their doors. We went by our parish church in Salt Creek, and the woman came up to me and said, "Were you in the Saint Patrick's Day parades?", and stuff like that. So, I mean, he was just kind of blown away by the friendliness, the openness, and we loved the quirkiness and the, I don't know, the coolness of the downtown. We tried to grow sunflowers in Arizona, and because there's not that much water, they were tiny, so we loved, these were on my family farm. And I fell in love with this building, so I thought, "Wow, this is awesome, let's go see what..." You know, we like to walk around cities and see what's possible, what could go, what could go in certain places, et cetera. And I contacted my friend Jeremy and asked him if we could go tour this building, and he said, "Hey, the city has a request for proposals out for 600 Cherokee, why don't we go look at that, too?" And so, that's kind of how we got here, and I guess our personal story. Professionally, my husband, yeah, is an architect trained in Germany. He did his master's at Columbia in New York, and then moved to London after he worked his working visa in New York, and has worked for, you know, quite a few good firms there. And then he started his own business with his father, doing energy consulting, started investing, just is a real entrepreneur at heart and a designer at heart. And I did architectural engineering at K-State, and then I moved to London also to work for a large global consulting firm called Arab. They do every type of engineering and are known, I guess most known for being able to engineer the projects that architects don't believe are possible. So, we got to look at a lot of nice things. While I was there, I did my master's in city design and social science, so I'm also very keen on how, how does design make places better, and how can you, yeah, how can you change the way people use places, et cetera. We lived in London, we got married in London, and then we moved to Berlin, and my work transferred us to San Francisco, and then, yeah, we're in Arizona now, close to my parents and with our, with our kids. So, we both have 20 years of experience, and we're excited to give back. I started my career doing lighting design for very high-end galleries. What's interesting is galleries became cultural institutions in their own right, they have every project type in them. One of my first jobs was the California Academy of Sciences in San Francisco. We're also used to managing and working on projects remotely. You need a very strong local team, of course, but, yeah, we're used to that. And then my master's, one of the, yeah, the key sayings was that in cities, good design is social, so you always have to think about the social integration and how your project is affecting its local context. In that note, I love to do strategic work, and we worked on the, I was a member of a firm where we did the lighting design advice for the Olympics in London, and it's just great to see projects from start to finish. It's wonderful to see, this was the East End of London, there was nothing there, and it was three different boroughs, and they completely redeveloped it to a park, and it was designed always for what happens after the Olympics, and it was a really great experience. This is a project in Korea that I did with a firm in Berlin. And then, I think, this is a project in Memphis, and this is probably one of the main inspirations for wanting to do something here in Leavenworth. The owners, so I became involved in San Francisco as a lighting designer for this project, and our firm also did the structural, the civil engineering and acoustic design, and the project was a, this was the old Sears building in Memphis, and it was, it used to be the heart of the community, and then as things changed and evolved, it just became vacant, it sat empty for 20 years, and everyone said to tear it down. There were two clients, an art history professor and another client, who said, "No, no, we've, we've lived abroad, we've seen how these buildings can really be special, let's get a team together, let's create, let's create a vision, and let's redevelop this building and this area of Memphis." And just being part of that project, it felt, it just felt worthwhile and useful, and they, they were able to do it, and they started with a, they set up a crosstown arts organization that became really the heart of this, this project and building, and these are some finished images of it. Yeah, and it's a real cultural hub, I mean, they, and this was a $200 million renovation job, so, part of me, I also thought, "Wow, if they can, if they can do that in their town of Memphis, you know, we can do this in Leavenworth." In terms of residential experience, my husband and I have, on the side of our full-time jobs, we've renovated our own properties, and, and it's been, yeah, really successful, so that, so much so that we thought, "Hey, instead of doing this on the side, why don't we create a company when we move to Arizona, and we can just start to do this as well?" And it's definitely a part of this project proposal is to do the top-floor residential. This is our apartment in Berlin, and we put in, yeah, we broke through the kind of living room and bedroom, and put in a new kitchen, et cetera. We also lived in San Francisco, and we did the same thing with our apartment in San Francisco. We had the top floor, our neighbors had the middle floor, and then we shared the ground floor, and we put in skylights, and my husband's really talented in terms of space planning, so he can, in terms of making floor plans really efficient and space is working really well, he loves to do that, and we put in the smallest bathroom that you could get in code of an old air shaft and a closet in San Francisco, and we were very proud of that. We use the old subway tiles, I don't know if you've been to San Francisco, but they have a distinct tile that was created only for the Bard Station in San Francisco, and we found that and put it into the bathroom. But we just have fun, we enjoy it, and it works well. This was our home in Germany that we recently renovated before we moved to Arizona, and we basically just opened it up, and we love taking old buildings and kind of making them better. This is some more images of that, we moved the bath, which, this used to be a balcony, an external balcony, so, yeah, anyways. And there's a lot of, I guess, examples of historic loft conversions, and there's a demand for residential properties in Leavenworth. Commercial office spaces, this was a project in Germany that I, the team that we did, so I led the lighting teams for Arab, for this company in Berlin and San Francisco, and when I was there, I didn't speak German yet, so we started entering competitions. It was a recession, it was 2009, so there wasn't a lot of work, and everyone was kind of eager to, you know, to win new work and get jobs, and there was a competition for this police station in Germany, so it was called a light and art competition, and there were four of us in the team, and we just had fun with it. So, we came up with a concept and an art sculpture installation where, at certain angles, it forms the, like, crosshair pattern, but it's very abstract, and you only see it from one angle of the building. It was also an energy-efficient competition, we had to design to Passive House standards, which are just extremely, extremely energy-efficient standards. And what I loved about this project was kind of the enthusiasm we had as a team to do it, the not letting constraints really stop the creativity, and also, in Germany, one of their, they have like a favorite television show is called Tatort, and it's basically like a crime, like a CSI-type thing, not as fancy as a CSI, but, and this is just a shot of the final installation, so, yeah, at a certain point in the gallery, you get this crosshair, but otherwise, you don't, you don't see it, so. Yeah, and then in San Francisco, we were involved in kind of a really wide range of office developments, which, I never enjoyed commercial properties until I moved to San Francisco, because all of the tech companies are kind of rethinking what is working and how can we work together, and the projects were really interesting. So, we worked on the, we did the engineering for the Apple campus, and just kind of defining every limit there, and, yeah, that, back to our, back to our building. Two projects that, two reference projects that I wanted to mention that I see kind of really inhabiting the spirit of 600 Cherokee, and this gallery that we're proposing is, this is in San Francisco, it's a gallery space called 111 Mina, and I would go there probably, you know, two times a week, maybe three, to meet with people, and they, they displayed art on one wall, and otherwise, they served coffee. It was just a creative space to meet, and they also did events there, and it worked really well, it was very simple, and, yeah, it was, it was a beautiful space, and that's kind of what we'd like to do. We're also interested in, in the small office space availability, especially with the pandemic of, we don't propose a coworking space, that could be an evolution of the office spaces, so starting with kind of small offices for one to four people, but it could evolve into a WeWork or a coworking type of space. I know the Leavenworth, the Leavenworth local has some kind of work-sharing areas, but, and then they often work with industrial buildings, with historic buildings, and also with kind of a creative component. Yeah, and again, just, you know, little pods can be inserted into the gallery or something like that. So, in terms of the specifics for our proposal for 600 Cherokee, we really want to bring the building back to its, it's kind of a distinctive heritage, so clean up the facade, you know, restore the glass. I looked at the historic reports, and the, you know, the cladding isn't original, and just reveal the brick behind, and really just kind of open, open the space up. Yeah, and then back to the plans, and the renderings, and then these are the floor In terms of, yeah, financing, I've listed everything out in detail, I'm not sure how detailed we want to go with this presentation, but we, when we came up with this project, we really wanted to create a gallery and art center, but speaking, you know, with our kind of local advisors, we wanted to make the project as financially viable as possible and stand on its own as much as possible. We didn't want to rely on donors necessarily, or, yeah, and when we kind of started working out the square foot, the cost per square foot and what we needed, we also wanted to look at ways that we could incorporate a nonprofit such as LV Arts into this space. So, these are the, these are kind of estimates looking at developing the ground floor and the top floor, and the external courtyard kind of reduces that usable space in a way, and lowers the cost of that, too. So, I met with a construction team today, and they, we've been talking for a few weeks, and I sent them our proposal, and they were also able to get on site, they brought an abatement contractor on site, and they had to look at everything, and were able to kind of back up our numbers, so we feel that it will take, you know, the building has had significant damage. When I, after, you know, when I'm honest, if I'm honest, when I first looked at the building, I was like, "Whoa, no, we don't want to touch this." But as we, as my husband and I modeled it and looked at it, and looked at the opportunities, and looked at the connections on Sixth Street and on Cherokee, the courtyard at the back, we just felt it kept having more and more potential. With that being said, it's a very difficult time right now to be starting construction.
Right.
There's supply chain issues, interest rates are going up, it's just, yeah, it's a difficult time. So, we were very conservative in estimating $100 per square foot, knowing that every service would have to be completely updated, and, and then, you know, the courtyard was $25 per square foot, just as an estimate, and we then also believe that it's not out of this realm, that the remediation of the building, a new roof, just making usable room, removing asbestos, getting rid of mold, would be in the region of $200,000. And the contractor, she confirmed that today, their estimator, I just said, "Yeah, that's, that's not an unreasonable figure." We also wanted to allow at least 10%, which may not even be enough in terms of increased material costs and supply chain issues. So, I met with Mutual Savings Association today, they're also very positive about the project, and we are looking at working with them, should this, should this go ahead. Yeah, and I guess what, in terms of our proposal, I think what we're asking for would be some support in bringing the building back to a kind of base-built status, so, I know that Penny has asked us for a form to kind of fill that out and share with you the details of that. And then in terms of project timeline, this is what we foresee a little bit, design through the end of the year, construction through 2024, and then final commissioning. Again, with supply chain issues, I, we would need to revisit this, and I would like to get this double-checked with the contractor team if and when, you know, we're commissioned or they're brought on board. Yeah, another note, we, I've always worked on kind of LEED-certified buildings for projects in the States, and we would also aim to have this building LEED-certified, and would also apply for, sorry, for the various rural energy program grants to do LED lighting, to have smart lighting controls, et cetera, potentially solar on the roof if that, if that's possible. Yeah, and then there's some supporting documentation from, yeah, from Mutual Savings with regard to down payment and the loan that we would be looking for. Green and My Rentals have also confirmed our cash, project cash flow estimates in terms of rents that could be expected, and, yeah, and then, in terms of the gallery space, I'm really eager to, to build on this concept of global and local, and it's why I was really, really excited to hear about LV Arts and their creation. I feel if we are to have a successful gallery space, or mixed-use gallery space, it would be important to have a, an art installation, so I would like to commission and install a permanent art installation that would give the galleries a presence kind of internationally, give people a reason to come visit Leavenworth, and something that wouldn't have to be, wouldn't be high in terms of maintenance and changing, et cetera, so there would be a permanent and a temporary component of that. What, you know, one of my favorite exhibitions is, this exhibition was at the Tate Modern in London, it was a La for Elias's weather project, and what was fascinating about it was how he changed the way people used the space. I've never seen people lay on the concrete floor before, but as soon as he put up a sun and a mirror, yeah, the space is full of people kind of bathing in the sun, and it's also, yeah, something I'm interested in learning more about. There are very, very beautiful, yet simple, light installations, for example, that we could propose for the building, that could also give it a presence at night and during the day, or, this is another favorite, kind of sculptural interventions that could be, you know, on the building and the courtyard, something that wouldn't, you know, would make it special. This is Anthony Gormley in London, and he, he works with figures, and everything he does is a, I don't know, a form of figure, and this was...
So, is that like a bronze statue or something?
Yeah, and they were all over, it was all over London, and it's, I don't know, it's kind of that interesting perception of who's looking at who.
Yeah.
And then I'm starting a PhD in the fall in design environment and the arts. James Terrell is a light artist and is doing his kind of lifetime work and is collaborating with the Arizona State University, and, yeah, a dream would be, I mean, to engage an artist of some sort of caliber to install something permanent, and also just, I would love to study and look at how, what are the ripples, like, how does this, this one project, what does it touch, and how do you measure that? Because it's very, this, I was discussing with Penny, I think, before this presentation last week, there's tangible and intangible results of projects and how they can affect a community, and I would love to study, yeah, study that, and I would love to, to use a real project to do that. And with that, I would love to introduce LV Arts, just to say a little bit about their organization and their, yes, interest in the project.
Hi.
We will get we prepared for you just to kind of go over some things that our organization has done in the past year.
Sure.
I did prepare a statement, if you guys would allow me to read that, as I'm a teacher and I'm not always the most brief, and I wanted to just say what I wanted to say, and not leave anything out, but do so, you know.
Thank you.
Short in time.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Michaela Fitzgerald, this is Beth Bristow. We've been incorporated, we're a 501(c)(3), and we've been incorporated with the state for a little over a year. I'm a teacher by day, I have my undergrad in secondary English education, and I'm also endorsed in K through 12 art education. Currently, I'm earning a Master of Arts in Education through the University of Nebraska. Carney, do you want?
I attended KU and got my BFA in 2005, and I've been working in Kansas City as an artist and illustrator and art director for the last 17 years. I grew up in Leavenworth, and now I raise my kids here, so that's part of one of the main reasons I think Michaela and I both volunteer for LV Arts, is because we want to see things grow and progress and have opportunities for our kids in town.
Absolutely. Okay, so I'd like to read this statement to you, because we really do feel like... Okay, so I'd like to read this statement to you because we really do feel like that we would become the heart of this building and that we could offer our community really cool things culturally and arts based. We'd like to point out that the heart of our organization's mission runs parallel to the goals outlined in the Leavenworth 2030 Comprehensive Plan and its aim to cultivate a stronger sense of community as well as to offer more unique attractions in Leavenworth. The arts act as central pillars to our organization and we intend to use them to cultivate a stronger sense of place making and community. We will do this by facilitating inclusive and accessible programming and events for residents and visitors alike. Together, we will hone and shape our skills through exploratory classes for all ages. Together, we will celebrate our humanity through dynamic, diverse, and ever-evolving art exhibitions. Together, we will build, broaden, and nurture a love for the arts as they become a visible and vital part of the community, essential to quality of life for the present and future generations who have decided to make Leavenworth their home. LV Arts aims to become a pulse for our downtown. In part, we will function as a partner with artists and local arts-based businesses and organizations to create a unified front for the arts in the Leavenworth area and beyond. By becoming a member of LV Arts, artists will receive representation, promotion, and potential job opportunities. By promoting arts-based businesses and organizations centered around music, dance, theater, visual arts, culinary arts, martial arts, and more, we will act as a liaison to the many pockets of arts opportunities already available in Leavenworth. LV Arts will become a one-stop shop for arts-related needs and our interests and we will be happy to connect the community with members of our arts family. Another function of our organization as we strive to cultivate a stronger sense of community would potentially take place at the Blue Stem Gallery located at 600 Cherokee upon approval. With this space, we will invite residents and visitors downtown to explore contemporary art and engage in other arts-based opportunities. As LV Arts believes art is for everyone and everywhere, we will work diligently to provide exhibitions that speak to the many diverse experiences in our community and the world. Headed by both paid staff and volunteers, we will become a steward of educational programs, including exhibition tours for schools and community groups with curriculum support, materials, youth activities, guest speakers, special event, and other visitor amenities. In a city otherwise known for its history, LV Arts would like to provide a way to use art as a means for building a more vibrant future. We care about Leavenworth because we're invested here. LV Arts board members have lived in this community long enough to see it evolve and we are passionate about improving the local aesthetic through our arts initiatives. We envision our downtown with engaging artworks visible on every street. People will come to explore and experience our unique Leavenworth vibe. Our community projects will commission professionally painted murals and creative artscapes at places like our library, in our parks, and on the facades of buildings that would otherwise go unnoticed or neglected. The Blue Stem Gallery at 600 Cherokee would be more than just a headquarters for our organization. It would be more than a gallery or an event space. It would create lasting ripples of positive change throughout our community. And what a beautiful masterpiece we think that would be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess just a final note, it's really critical for a project like this that we, we have buy-in from many different areas of the community. So we have, you know, buy-in from the government, we have private investment, we have local nonprofit energy enthusiasm. And, yeah, I guess our, we're really excited about this project. We think it would be wonderful and we hope that you are, too. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, if you have any questions, Griff.
Yeah, actually, just a real quick, and I appreciate the presentation and laying out all the details. You guys did a good job of that. Can you tell me kind of the split in your mind right now? I know things are still kind of rough, but office space versus actual gallery space?
Yeah. Yeah, the off, we have, the office space is about fifteen hundred square feet. Residential would be twenty, about twenty-six hundred square feet. And then the gallery is close to, yeah, fourteen hundred.
Now, your 2024 projected open for business, you know, date, I know, obviously. I, I work in supply chain in my day job, too, so I get it.
Yeah, even since the time of submitting this to, to now, interest rates have gone up and things have been delayed, so.
It changes so quick.
And that's in only a month, right?
Is that, is that pretty, you know, is that a good target? Are you leaving it open, obviously, right now? Yeah, you know, sooner the better, but is that, can you shed any more light on your thoughts for? Do you have any, any fears of it being extended beyond 2024 a considerable amount?
Sure, yeah, definitely. I, I feel like we're in a time right now where we can't necessarily control that. I know, I mean, the contractors are doing a wonderful job in terms of juggling everything. So if, for example, electrical components are not available right at the moment. So they're trying to finish everything else and work in a way where that lag can not delay the whole project. So I think we, we were generous in this timeline in terms of, you know, understanding that it's a public project. You know, there's approvals, processes and things like that, review, I'm sure. We, I think it's, it's realistic, but-
Okay, no, that's cool. I, it, different folks are working on different projects, some of them plant down in certain areas of their supply chain. So can you tell me any more maybe about the, what do I want to say here? Just get my mind. Kind of your, the target audience that you're looking, you know, for your, your gallery? Do you see it more, you know, younger generation, older generation? What, what are you kind of, what are your, I'm just kind of curious, you know, thoughts on that?
You know, in line with LV Arts, I think we'd like it to be for everybody. For kids, for, you know, retired military, for, you know, there's, there's such a unique mix of people in Leavenworth that I think we'd love to provide something that helps to unite all these different, you know, people, different socioeconomic backgrounds. You know, I have, my son has special needs. I would love programming for kids with special needs. Just everyone can bring their own, you know, interest to that, but yeah, we see it for everybody and-
We could be draw for tourism, too.
Yeah.
Right, you had certain exhibitions there, whatever.
Yeah, we'd hope to do one at least quarterly. I mean, we're just getting started and so.
But we've talked about how it would be a space for, you know, we could have a local youth competition or we've just recently done a sunflower competition. That would have been a wonderful place to be able to display all of those and let everyone get to come down and see the kids' artwork, you know. It would also be a wonderful chance to work with St. Grace College. They have the Lincoln exhibit every year. Maybe their senior shows could be down there to bring, again, those parents from out of town, you know, into town to come stay and have a, you know, a big kind of celebration for those seniors graduating and moving out of the arts department. But, yeah, we would love for it to hit a lot of different people.
Is there a Blue Stem Gallery located anywhere in the Midwest?
I did Google it. I did Google it. Not that I could find, that doesn't mean it's not.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, yeah, get a picture of what it would look like.
Oh, if you-
I'm sorry, if they already can.
If you have one.
Did you already have one?
Do you already have a Blue Stem Gallery?
Would this be a second Blue Stem Gallery?
Oh, no, no, no.
No, this is the first.
Okay, sorry about that.
I knew, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No, no, this would be the, the one and only.
Is there anything in the Kansas City area that may be close to it that I could possibly like visit, look at it, experience it?
I would say the Kansas City Art Association, they have a new building and they have a new, they have a gallery in there that is very revolving and rotating and has a lot of smaller short shows that are really highlighting. They, they also have artist studios in the building and so those artists get to be featured in the gallery space. So I would say that was a really good one to look at.
Or even the Lawrence Art Center.
Exactly, that's what I was gonna say, that was our start, was the Lawrence Art Center. Like, how do we do an art center and can we do a paint space on the top floor?
I've been to the Lawrence Art Center, I've never been to the, when you're talking about.
But there's been a realistic, we're, you know, this is my family, like, we have our own firm. We're not a huge property developer or we're not.
No, I got it.
So I was also kind of thinking, how do we, how do we do a small, yet usable gallery? Kind of as a first step, you know, there's other spaces in Leavenworth, but how can we, ideally, this project would kind of fund itself through the, the office spaces and the residential. And it would kind of be, yeah, a smart kind of starting point. Like, ideally, I would see, you know, we've always envisaged that, you know, LV Arts has that corner office and it just, it starts this art movement. But hopefully, you know, they could grow to a bigger gallery somewhere else or, yeah.
We will, so.
Yeah, and then we could take the coworking space in the, in the Blue Stem Gallery.
Yep, and thank you for your presentation, appreciate it.
Yes, good presentation. Yeah, no, it's a great presentation.
Hi, Michaela.
Hello.
I know Michaela from when she was about yay tall.
Yep.
And I didn't recognize you earlier. I have a couple of questions. One, you see your primary resident as being the, the residential upstairs, the people residential, and the offices? I mean, who's, who's going to be your primary resident? In the gallery, I'm, I'm thinking you're, you're imagining it would be LV Arts, right? But then, then you're looking for, you're going to try to rent out all the above, the upstairs lots?
Yes.
As well as all the retail, the rental space, the offices on the bottom. Is there going to be any retail at all?
No, no retail. I mean, it could evolve. When we first started, we had the entire, when we first started modeling the space, we, we had the entire kind of ground floor as a gallery. And then we, yeah, we, it was just this, it's a numbers game in a way. It's spreadsheets of, okay, how can we, how do we pay for this? So then we, we kind of took back this part of the building, made it, put in a four hundred square foot office here and then a meeting room slash office in the corner here with a kitchen and a coffee room. So the coworking spaces, people go work at cafes, but you can't print things, you can't have meetings there. And so this is kind of a, a way to, it's, it's kind of a pseudo coworking space. But they, ideally, the offices would be rented out, you know, for a year.
Least, yeah.
Right, and, but the, the nice part, the reason people want to work here instead of a coffee shop or instead of in their homes is that they can go to the courtyard and meet and talk with other people. There's, there is this kind of networking capability and then there are office amenities. So, but it is flexible. I mean, we, we thought if the gallery was more successful and there were additional revenue streams, we could, you know, you could break out this wall, you could put in a little bookshop. I mean, there, there's lots of evolving potential uses for it. But at the moment, yeah, this, we see all of this to be kind of rented out. This would be shared, amenity space, it would kind of be shared by all the tenants and then, but the courtyard and the gallery itself would not be rented out. I think there is a scope for potential event space, but I don't know that Leavenworth needs more event spaces. So it, it would just be more events for the people in, that are already using that space at times.
Right, right. Kind of to an event, yeah.
Right, not as a book your wedding here, I mean, maybe if they want to, okay.
Right, right, right.
Not as, that's not one of the main drivers of the, of the project.
LV Arts is focused mainly on visual arts?
We are inclusive. We like to, you know, highlight as many of the arts as we can and partner with community groups who are already doing things in music, like the tune shop, for instance, or the RCCP in theater. And really just work with each other to highlight the various things that are already going on, whether it be, you know, a visual gallery and then we invite a dance group in to do a performance in the gallery. Like, we really want it to be very experiential and something that like people are gonna come to just to, for the experience itself.
You know, music outside in the courtyard would also be wonderful.
Right, yeah. But not limited to visual art necessarily.
I was wondering if you were including performing arts at any time?
Yes.
Like, let me sing it.
Couldn't you give me the, the measurements, basically? How wide and how deep will the, the main gallery be there on the first floor?
I'd have to measure it, but it, yeah, I'd have to look at the floor plan.
If you don't have it right now, don't worry about it.
I don't have it right now, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's about, what is it, fifteen hundred, thirteen hundred square feet?
I think it's fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what you said before. Fourteen hundred square feet.
No, no, I don't mean square feet, I mean length by depth, or width by depth. Like I said, if you don't have that right now, don't worry about it.
Yeah, yeah, whatever I say would be wrong, so.
Yeah, you can get that information back to us. Might have been in our hand.
And then, if I can ask you,
It'll be good. Yeah.
How much entrepreneurial experience do you have?
So I don't as much, but my husband has quite a bit. So he set up his own firm in Germany and that's kind of provides, so he's an architect, but his dad is an entrepreneur and has, is a lawyer, but has set up a number of different companies. And our livelihood comes from his energy consulting firm that he set up in, in Berlin in Germany ten years ago. And he had these amazing ideas at the time of like a passive income and how you set that up. So he's doing that and, and that's, that's worked out really well for us. And he built, you know, their kind of website and infrastructure, et cetera. And also started kind of doing private investing. So he has quite a bit of entrepreneurial experience.
Did you just say private investigating?
Private investing.
Private investing, okay. I was wondering, wait, how'd the one get connected to the other? Okay. Well, thank you, thank you. It's good to see you. Did you, did you say your name was Bristow?
Yes, I'm married to Bristow.
Oh, okay. I, I know, see your dad all the time.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Yeah, I didn't have any questions at this time. Usually I like to review everything and I might come back and ask you for some information. But I love your enthusiasm, you know. I, I get enthusiastic and I love the packet. But, and it's nice just to see this building how it is now and your vision, you know, for the future, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Would it be possible to get a, a copy of this?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
We submitted when the, we submitted an electronic copy.
Oh, Penny.
It was in your account.
Okay.
It'd be terrific, yes.
Okay, no, thank you very much, thank you.
You take five?
We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Sure.
For the second presentation tonight, I'd like to introduce Sean Wilcott. He'll present his proposal and also introduce his team.
And he brought refreshments.
They told me no of those, so there's just air in those, so.
Oh, darn.
As I get started here, first thing I'd like to do is thank Penny for everything through the whole process. This goes back to, I think, the first, February, maybe, somewhere in that area. So she's been great back and forth over the, over the timeframe. I also want to thank the city commission as well for the time tonight to kind of go through and listen to the proposal and welcome any questions, even through the process. So if there's questions as we go through, feel free to cut me off or jump right in and we can pick back up as, as we go. So as the, as the presentation goes, it'll be pretty much a full, well-rounded aspect of things. I wanted to start off by introducing, my wife and I, we're, we're the owners of Wilcott Brewing Company. Kind of go through a very fast-paced introduction of that. We'll talk about the existing Wilcott Brewing Company, where we're at today. Then we'll kind of roll right into the project presentation, what our proposal is with, with the actual property at 600 Cherokee. We'll go through and touch on a couple of benefits that we feel that we bring to the community with, with the proposal and then we'll wrap up with Q and A as well.
Sure.
So kind of starting off, my name's Sean Wilcott. I am a sixth-generation Leavenworth native on my mom's side and at least a fifth generation on my dad's side. We go, go back many, many years. Fourth-generation business owner. My great-grandpa had a Wilcott drugstore out on Seventh Street. My grandpa, his son, had a Wilcott liquor store, which was attached to that drugstore. My dad actually had Wilcott Law Practice, which is right across, literally right across the street here on Shawnee for about twenty, twenty-five years. My brother has Wilcott Woodworks here in the community as well. And then we would be looking to bring Wilcott Brewing Company, kind of carry on that tradition with the Wilcott name. I went to Kansas State University, graduated mechanical engineering. Since then, I've been out into industry, multiple manufacturing aspects of things. My wife, Jennifer Wilcott, she's here as well with us. She's a Lawrence native, she was born and raised in Lawrence, spent her early years there.
Rock town.
She ended up relocating through her high school years and finished out high school up in Oregon before she relocated back to Kansas to go to Kansas State as well. That's where we ended up meeting, was in Manhattan. She ended up graduating with a social science degree at that time and then picked up after that graduation. After we got married, she ended up going back to school, got a teaching degree and has since also got her master's in, in teaching administration. So she's, she's currently a teacher and in her, we'll say, spare time has been actively running the taproom for Wilcott- has been actively running the taproom for Wilcott Brewing Company as well. Recently, she's put in her notice, she's actually notified the school district where she's teaching at, her intentions at the end of the school year to come full-time at Wilcott Brewing Company. So she'll be stepping away from that education world and fully focused on the, on the business. We have three kids, they're a sophomore, a freshman, and a sixth grader. We're raising them in Holton, Kansas, which is about an hour and 10 minutes northwest of here, give or take. Small farming community, that's about 3,200, so it's a very small, it's a county seat. Though, they're, they're very active in sports, we do good, good, try to be good on sporting that, but we haven't really taught them yet how to do their laundry, so we're still working on cutting the edges on that one a little bit. Wilcott Brewing Company, as I said, it's located, existing today, down in the downtown district of Holton, Kansas. It, it's a, we brew and package onsite, where we end up producing it. We package in 12-ounce glass bottles and six-packs, as well as keg product for distribution in five counties currently today in Kansas. After we opened up the brewery itself, we had a second expansion at the end of last year, where we opened up an 1,800 square foot taproom, where we end up bringing in patrons from the community and from outside, where we serve our product, as well as wines from, from regional wineries and other local business offerings as well. Beef sticks, beef jerky, popcorn, things of that nature. The business itself, this, this year, we were actually very honored when we ended up being, being recognized by the Holton Jackson County Chamber of Commerce with the 2022 Unity in the Community Award. We very much focused our, our attentions around our business, and we kind of have the core principle that, first, we need to bring value to the community, next, we bring value to other businesses in town, and then finally, we bring value to the, to our patrons. And that's kind of the model that we, that we've been focused on since we've opened our doors. We also are very honored at, at the recognition from the Kansas Small Business Development Center in northeast Kansas. They recognized us with the 2021 Up and Coming Business of the Year Award. That was, uh, given to businesses who draft business models, execute those business models, build a strong foundation, and then show potential growth and, and expansion and excellence. We, we focus again very heavily around community. We have a lot of community events around it, we collaborate with multiple businesses. There's a picture there of a shelf with, with a whole series of custom mugs. Holton's lucky enough, we have a glass blowing shop in town. We've partnered with them to, to create a mug club membership. And part of that is those members actually go down to that glass blowing place to create their own beer mugs, to where they bring those back and have them at our, at our facility. We've worked with our, our local community, this is kind of a rough sample here. Last Fourth of July, where we did a custom labeled product, so we had a custom brewed beer, where the label itself actually advertised the Jackson County Fourth of July event, and it tells on the side the different things we have going, along with dates and other information associated with that. This product was distributed through our, our five-county distribution area to help kind of get the word out and promote that, that business. And then we do street celebrations. So last year, for our grand opening, we ended up working with our city to actually shut down the street that adjoined the, the property. Had an outdoor event where we brought in live music, partnered with a number of the restaurants in town to come set up their own, their own booths and sell their product at the event. We're working here for the Memorial Day weekend, a very similar event. Holton has their glory days through the Memorial Day weekend, which is an antique car show, it's the Clash Reunion Parade, it's, it's a big deal in Holton. And some of the organizers of the car show reached out to us and asked if we would help engage kind of an after-party. So my wife and, and team have very focused and have successfully planned for that. When the car show's done with the awards at 1:00, then we're actually kicking off a, a after-party starting at 1:00 to kind of collaborate and work with the city on that. So the, the real fun part of it here, which is, is really what we're here to talk about, for about the last eight months, we've been sitting down and starting to evaluate areas and opportunities to expand our brewing company and take it to some other locations. Through that evaluation, we, we had looked at three communities that we were in the process of evaluating to take our expansion to. With the roots and the history with Leavenworth, it was on the list. Leavenworth also, between the Leavenworth, the Lansing, and the, and the military base here, is about 55,000 population, according to 2019 records, that kind of factored into it. We have a college in, in the community, as everybody's well aware. So add all that together, based on our experience as well as industry standards, Leavenworth should be able to support easily two, if not three, microbreweries in the industry, and we currently sit at zero. So that, that really was one of the draws that had us look at, at that aspect to the community. Through that, we kind of, through our evaluations, came across the, the proposal, the, the request for proposal. And once that started to go through after the first tour, basically abandoned or paused the evaluation of the other two communities and really started focusing on this chance and opportunity to work with Leavenworth. We felt that the, that the location of the property, the amenities the property had, as well as the redevelopment to the downtown, it was, it was a really nice fit for what we were looking to do. So the, the property itself, we've had the opportunity to go through the property a couple of different times. There, there is some significant work to be done on the property, as, as I'm sure everybody's aware with that as well. The roof itself has multiple areas of damage where, where there's a significant leaking through. The water control systems basically are, are not routing the water in the proper areas. It's not collecting and draining water off. There is some structural framework on the northwest property itself, so not only is it into the, the roofing membrane, there's actually severe rot with that, as well as some structural settling on that area of the property. The exterior of the building itself, there's some brick tuck repair that needs to be done to that to bring it back to restoration. Windows and doors, everybody can drive down Cherokee and see today that, that there's some windows and doors that need to be worked on with it, and then some minor cosmetics to dress, really dress up the property itself. The interior, there's a long list there, basically, it's a complete gut job. They're all new electrical, all new watering, HVAC system needs completely upgrade replaced. Flooring, the insulation that was in the roof, which wouldn't meet modern code anyways, that's all water-sogged and rotted, that needs to be completely replaced. Restrooms in it, and, and just the basic cosmetics. I mean, it, for lack of better terms, it, it's a complete gut through the whole property. What our intentions with the property would be, to open up a second brewery where we would produce the product onsite, as well as a taproom. Basically use the, the successful model that we have working today in Holton, duplicate that here in the Leavenworth community. For those of us that have been around for a while, the Mike's CDs building is what I always referred it to. Would actually be the, the brew house. We have an eight-barrel steam-fired two-vessel system. It's a used system, but it is, it's the little sister to the, to the system that we operate today in Holton. And that comes with four fermenters and, and all the supporting utilities and equipment being used. You know, there's a plus or minus on that. One of the major pluses for us is we could physically drive up on a trailer today and throw, start in the, the process. So it really cuts down on our lean times associated with the project. We'd be looking to add back on that northwest corner, where there is substantial structural damage. Basically, that part of the structure, we would propose, I classify it as a complete loss at this point. I would tear that, that area of, of the property down, re-expose the original 1800s, late 1800s, early 1900s brick. You can tell by the construction of that area of the property, it's got CMU block walls. It's not original to the property, so from a historical standpoint, I don't think it would really hold any historical value to it. We'd be looking to bring back that historical exterior of the original property and turn that into a beer garden, wine garden patio area. Then for the, the home video section of the building, if you will, that would actually be the taproom itself. So complete gut job on that. We'd end up fully renovating the whole facility, bring in new laboratories, restroom areas, would all be brand new. We'd bring everything up to code. We'd end up having a, a meeting and gathering space, so we have today a small area in our facility that's starting to get a lot of utilization. Anything from the PTO, local PTO's used it a couple of times. The Shriners have come out and used it as a meeting area. We've had some other small businesses come in and use that, so it's an area we would like to try to duplicate to where we can have a small meeting venue, to where we can have small groups come in and utilize that, for free. I mean, it's, it's one of those things where it's part of the business, but it's a nice venue for that. We bring in a lot of live music, so it helps really bring some life down to the, to the downtown of Holton. We'd like to go ahead and duplicate that aspect of it. We're very family-friendly oriented, so we end up having a lot of our tables actually have board games built into the tables to help promote a fun environment, welcoming environment for kids. We're in the process right now of actually making homemade root beer to kind of help appeal to that aspect of the, of the family as well. And though not part of this original proposal, the upstairs has a lot of square footage to it. What we would be looking to do with the upstairs is actually bring in a makerspace, which is an area, it's like a collaborative environment to where home hobbyists, schools, clubs can all gather and kind of focus on kind of technology-driven and areas of things where they may not have the ability to invest at home or don't want to invest at home, but have access to those types of resources.
With the equipment?
With the equipment, so like 3D printing, for example. That, that's an environment where we'd be looking to bring in 3D printing, laser die-cutting, tables and circuitry areas, robotics. Basically make a space where you can't necessarily build, say, an EV car outside, but you can kind of get around those home hobby aspects of things.
Hands-on experience right there, yep.
Yep, exactly. Again, this isn't the original proposal on that. Our, our main focus really would be get the business established, get it open, but we would be looking in the future to be bringing the, the makerspace upstairs.
Sure, supportive, yep.
I have a question.
Sure.
So having a brewery here, having alcohol, there's a certain percentage of, of income that has to come from food. Is that correct, under our ordinances?
No, there's different rules and regulations for distilleries versus breweries, but I'm not aware of any regulations related to food sales making up a portion of it. I'll have to look into that a little more.
Okay.
So, I can tell half of it. So Kansas is a three-tier system and, and they're liquor by the drink, which is set up for establishments to sell on, on premise. That's broken down from the state level, they break it down to a county level, and then it has to go through a specific process in the county to be able to, to vote to accept that. We went through the process in Jackson County last year, which is what drove us to, to put in the taproom. Leavenworth County has already passed that, that was one of the things, one of the aspects that we ended up looking into. I did not, can, I, I cannot confirm if the city has a more restrictive policy, but Leavenworth County does allow, does not require the 30% food sales.
Okay, okay, I couldn't remember how that, that worked, there was.
I'll look for us, just to make sure.
Yeah. Thank you, sorry about that.
Sure. Timeline-wise, and the packets that you guys have, basically it's the first half of that is the presentation. The middle part of that is, is the original proposal that we had, we presented to the city. If you go through that, you'll see a timeline in there that's slightly different than the one you're looking at here. Basically, they hold the same principle, which is we're, we're ready to rock and roll with the project instantaneously upon approval. There's very, I mean, it, it's obvious that a project of this nature, where we're working with the city through the acquisition of the property, there's some steps up front that would have to be gone through. But, but the timeline I'm presenting here basically shows that we're ready at this point in time to, to move instantaneously on the project. Once we do that, if we, once we acquire the property, demolition would begin. I've already got a roofing contractor aligned. We were, technically, we're already penciled into their schedule to have the roof replaced. Again, having a brother in the construction industry local, he's put me in contact with plumbers and electricians. So we've, I've already reached out and got the subcontractors aligned. They're, they're able to work on this timeframe as well. We would be looking to install the brew house itself in July of this year. And then we would, if construction were to start, basically in early June, we'd be in a position where we would have the interior complete towards the end of September, and our goal would be to have a Oktoberfest grand opening, where we would try to, to have a celebration this fall. And then, once the business is up and running, back to the, the statement earlier, we'd be looking to bring in a makerspace, go through the details and design work of that, starting next year and into '24.
Gotcha, okay.
So experience-wise, the first brewery that we have today up in Holton, my wife and I had purchased this back in 2015. This property itself was, was in extreme disrepair. I had done all the design work myself, went through, and it was a, a full renovation through the facility, cleaned everything out. I wish I could say I was that young when we started, but that's actually a picture of my son who was in there learning how to run a jackhammer, so. The facility itself was a full-blown renovation, I did all the, the system design through the brew house side of things, the steam lines, all the glycol systems. I also did the installation, startup of the, the whole equipment. We ended up running our first commercial batch through this at the beginning of, actually it was Valentine's Day of 20, of '21 is when we ran our first production batch. We did have the opportunity to acquire the building next to us, which is our taproom. We ended up buying that at auction. It was actually, the building was going through the, was being condemned, it was going through the condemnation process through the city of Holton. The property owner at that time went ahead and sold the property the weekend before the city voted to, to take action. My wife and I acquired that property in September of '20, prior to Liquor by the Drink passing. So we sat on the property until that November, when Jackson County voted in favor of revoking that law. And once that action took place, right after the first of the year, middle of January, we started our actions of, of the demolition process. So this was a significantly more involved project. Once we got into it, the building itself was built in 1890. To put in perspective, the building that we started with was built in 1820, or 1926, I'm sorry, it was built in 1926. So a little bit different construction between the two. This building was built in 1890 when we started going into the process. The, the rot through the property itself was, was just, unfortunately, we were not able to save both stories of the property. But we ended up coming back, having to come back in with structural footings through the whole property, structural steel through it to reinforce it. We were able to save three of the original walls from 1890, so we did a restoration through those. Ended up rebuilding it to, to modern codes, as well as food establishment standards. And, and we had done this to where we were able to open for our grand opening of September 25th of last year. So this project itself had, had about a nine-month window, including complete demolition. Funding-wise, we're proud to say, over the many nights, weekends, and holidays that we've slaved away, missing some vacations in there, my wife and I are, are proud to say that, that Wilcott Brewing Company is wholly owned by us. We are the only owners, we have no investors, we have no partners, which gives us the, the benefit of being able to pull the trigger. When we make a decision, we don't need a board to vote, we can just run with that, with that project itself. This particular project, we will be gaining some personal debt through it. The last page of, of the packet handed out, you'll see the bank's letter that we've worked with. We have been pre-approved, they're, they're fully updated with the project scope, the details of the project, and, and they're on board and excited to partner with us again for this project. So the, the, the project as, as a whole is fully, fully financed as we stand today. We would be looking at, at utilizing the $15,000 grant from the city of Leavenworth, but it's non-contingent on the project. What we'd be looking to do with this grant really would be more community promotion. Some of the stuff we're working with right now with, with the city of Holton is trying to build like maps. So we, we have a lot of tourism for, for our, our business, breweries seem to be a destination point. And so we're working with our city to try to put a, a city map right in front of our brewery to help kind of inform people that there's our downtown or our business district. We'd be looking to do things like that, or, or maybe revitalize the face of the building to help the, the aesthetics to the community aspect of things. So we would be applying for that grant through the city of Leavenworth, but that would not be, the, the project as a whole would not be contingent upon that.
Sure.
Benefits, and I can always put the old cliche, we're a commercial business, we have tax dollars, and we, we bring jobs. But really, the, the main benefits that are unique to the, to the brewery itself, tourism, as I was just stating. Saturdays, we found in Holton that when we open at 11:00 till about 4:00 in the afternoon on Saturdays, about 60% of our customers are out of town. They, they travel to Holton specifically to come to the brewery, which is a really cool aspect for us, because if they're coming to the community to... aspect for us, because if they're coming to the community to, to check us out, they're buying lunch down the street, they're filling their truck and their cars up with gas, we have a really, really neat downtown, like I said, with the glass blowing shop and home shops, it's really a draw to help, help drive the community aspect of things, so tourism is a benefit that we feel would, is, is one that we would bring to the table. Community collaborations, as I had previously stated, we, we try to work very closely with a lot of businesses in town, and if, if we all win, then we all win type of mentality. We do not serve food in our establishment, and, and how our model works today is we welcome outside food to come in, we actually carry the menus of the restaurants in our community in our establishment, and have a couple of them will actually deliver to, to our establishment. We would carry to have that same mentality when, when we would be looking to come to Leavenworth, where we would try to collaborate with the other businesses down in that area. And then the celebrations, with the Haymarket Square being one block away, they're, they're just, I mean, that just screams opportunity at, at having outdoor community events and, and partnering up through, through those aspects of things. So that's a hundred mile an hour review?
That's alright.
But I'll open it up for questions.
Anyone have any questions, fellow commissioners?
He's already answered them.
Yeah, you, very thorough.
It's very thorough, yeah.
You know, so you said you've, you've been there, you've done it, you've taken something bad before, you've turned it around, in a quick timeframe, is what I heard you say. Can you, can you, can you speak to, you mentioned a family environment and everything, how does that, you know, how does that look today up in Holton, you know, right now, I know it sounds like you're experimenting with a few things possibly for this, you know, this, this site, what, what do you see as far as folks come in, I mean, with the event space too, can you, can you maybe give me a better picture of how that can play out, you see kids coming with their parents to go hang out, you know, and, and...
Sure.
Just wondering if you just give some more flavor around some of that?
Sure. So, having tables with games, I mean, that, that's a quick, quick opener where folks can come in and play, we see parents and kids playing games together, we see kids, high schoolers, so our, our daughters are in high school, so we have high schoolers that come in and just kind of use it to hang out a little bit. Early in the summertime, when we first opened, there was a small group, and I don't, I don't know their ages, they were probably, I'd say from eighth grade to fifth or sixth grade, that would actually ride their bikes, dump their bikes in the front, and they would come in, order Pepsi's, some of them would bring Pepsi's from Casey's, and they would just sit down to play the game, so we, we kind of open that up and welcome, it's kind of a cool feeling to, to know that your, your space is being utilized in a safe environment for those kids on a Saturday to come hang out and play board games. We have kicked around some ideas of trying to integrate some, say, electronics, and the top view, I think I even showed a game room in there, yeah. So, the top view there, you know, trying to build a, some more environments around, trying to make it a family friendly environment. Being a, a craft beer or, or just a brewery aspect of things, it, it's a different environment than, say, a bar, which bars aren't bad, I'm not, I'm not throwing, throwing stones on that, but the environments are typically a, a different environment than, than an establishment of that nature, so they're more welcoming around, you know, music, again, families come in all the time, have dinner, they bring their kids in.
And, and real quick, sorry to change gears on you, I appreciate that, thank you. The, the exterior, what were your thoughts again on that, you talked about, you know, showing more actual brick and stuff like that, can you walk me through that again?
Sure.
You're playing for the outside?
Sure, so we want to maintain a lot of the same aspect that we currently have in Holton, so we're, we're looking to build a brand, if you will, so kind of associate that with, there was a picture, so the, the natural stained wood, and we also actually have a corner entry on, on our existing taproom as well, so that, that kind of fits in with the same brand, with a small awning over the top of that, and the picture doesn't do much justice, but that's actually cedar shingles. We'd be looking to kind of incorporate that same look and the same design around the front entry.
Sure.
The, the gray siding that, the metal siding that's up there today, our intentions at this point in time would be to come back and replace that with the same wood that we have, the same wood look that we have with our taproom today. The awning itself, that's over, I'll say, the Mike's CDs, I would like to try to save that if we can, because that being the brew house, the, the glass windows is really the exposure that we would, kind of the intent of putting the brew house through the windows is that people can be walking down the street and actually see a brewery in action, so have, if we can maintain the awning and, and still make it look good, I'd like to have that in case it's raining out, outside.
Sure.
But the brick itself, you know, trying to, to keep that brick look, the beer garden or the, the wine garden patio area, I don't know if you've been through the property yourself or not, but the, the south wall and the east wall of that existing room is the original brick of, of the structure, so we'll be looking to bring that back to exposure outside, so basically demolishing the roof and the two exterior walls there, and then coming back with a privacy fence is what we'd be looking to do on that side.
Okay, and then lastly, just recapping, outside of the city grant, not looking for any additional funding, feel pretty good about having a handle on the supply chain, and looking to go live in the autumn of September.
Our, our objective, and again, a lot of that be contingent on how quickly we can get started.
Sure, sure.
The unknowns aspect of that is, is kind of...
Thought that was brick!
Again, you know, I, this, this building right here that you're looking at, I think I had a picture in there that showed you a shell, and we were able to turn that in nine months, and, and walking through the facility, the six hundred Cherokee right now, I, I feel pretty confident with having a strong understanding of the current condition that the property's in, and confident with, with hitting that.
Alright, appreciate that, that's my question, everybody.
So, so you talked about the wood, so the, the entry would be, that black stuff would be taken off, all that, and then the brick would be on the side, would the brick be kept, I mean, you've got that siding over the brick.
So, that siding that you're looking here, what our intentions are to replace the metal siding along the side, so the second story where the gray metal side is, is where we'd be looking to put that type of siding in, in place.
Oh, okay, the wood. So you'd be covering the brick again?
We would be taking the metal down to replace with wood, yes.
So you'd be covering the brick again?
In, in that area, yes.
Okay. Just curious about that.
What would the entry be for the maker space?
So, right now, today, there's access on the east side of the property through a door, we'd be looking to utilize that same access where you'd go up that staircase and they're in there.
Great presentation.
No, I don't, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, very thorough, I appreciate that.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Wish you guys could get together and do it all, do all one.
I know, yeah.
Keep it with McKeel and Deucey, the whole thing.
Go ahead.
Ooh, that's an idea. How many, how many different kinds of beer and ale do you produce now?
Currently, we have eight beers on draft, so we have...
No ales?
I'm sorry?
No ales?
Well, technically, they're all ales, so difference between ale and lager is the yeast that you utilize, so, sounds like you're familiar with the, with the craft beer world a little bit. We have four flagships that we actually package in bottles that we offer through our, our distribution channels today, which are actually three six packs, so we have, this is a, this was a special event, so that's not a traditional offering, we have American wheat, a single IPA, double IPA, and a sweet stout, so those are the four that we have on flagship. Right now, the four that we have on draft, in addition to that, we have an amber ale, we have our winter spice ale, which we're getting ready to pull back off.
Sure.
We have an Irish red, and we have a whip beer.
Would you be looking also at the, the possibility of then packaging your, your brews and selling them locally through, through market, through, you know, stores?
That's actually one of the, the models we were looking at, so for our expansion that we've been evaluating the different communities on, was not only from a, a taproom brewery, but also expand out our footprint. We, we worked with a, a special event in Lawrence last year, where we actually signed the distribution agreement with O'Malley's, which is based out of Lawrence, and that actually, based on that previous event that we had done for them, our, we actually have legally set up a distribution channel today for Atchison, Leavenworth, Douglas, Jefferson, Franklin and Jefferson. We don't exercise that territory because we're not into that territory with, with strong presence yet, but we already do have a supply chain and the intent to, to now roll our distribution into that territory.
When you said O'Malley's, we're talking about a different O'Malley's than the one in Weston, right?
Different O'Malley's.
Different O'Malley's.
Thank you. Sure.
I didn't have any questions at this time, but yeah, great presentation.
Well, thank you, appreciate that.
I think, I think that'd make a field trip.
I know, I was, I, I had that down too, besides those other art places, but yeah, I was thinking, I, you know, I've never been to Holton before.
I have, it's a nice, it's a nice town.
I've never been there.
In the fall, it's gorgeous when all the trees turn and everything.
Yeah.
And we were lucky enough, we're one of the communities that still has a strong downtown square, so being a county seat, the, the center of the square is the courthouse, and we've got four streets of, of businesses around that, and it, and it's doing quite well, it's pretty strong, so.
And I think your wife said, is it thirty-two hundred or people, is that it?
Thirty-two hundred is the town population.
Population.
Sounds nice.
Talking about everybody knows everybody.
Yeah, kind of like Leavenworth, sorry, we're all related.
Coincidentally, we actually grew up in the same house until I, different years, obviously.
Yeah, we sold the house to the Willcott family.
Talking about a small world.
Are you related to Della?
Yes, that's, that's, that's my dad's cousin.
Yeah.
Yep.
Are you related to Fred?
Fred?
Yeah.
I just made that name. I don't know any Freds. Willcott's a rare name, so if you know Willcott, I'm probably related to him in the area.
Yeah, Sister Amy.
Yep, Sister Amy.
Estimation on potential jobs this could bring to the community, just, just out of curiosity, I, I didn't know how you guys were planning on running it.
So, the model itself, having a brewery in Holton, we'd be looking to have some shared duties that, that would add value, so some of those would be part-time, Leavenworth part-time, Holton, where those people reside to be determined.
Sure.
We'd be looking to bring on our full-time brewer, part-time brewer on that. Today, I'm doing all the brewing myself, so we'd be looking at bringing that on with an assistant, I have one of the two locations. Caitlin actually is our regional manager today, I'm up in Holton, she'd be bringing, coming down here, I would foresee a potential assistant manager, depending on, on how things shake out here, and obviously, the, every, every bartender, server, anything that we have associated with that team, we'd probably be looking at the twelve to fifteen range would be my best guess, three rotations.
Okay.
And it's easy for me to say, because Caitlin manages that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
What kind of hours and, and what days of the week are you looking at, operating?
So, currently, up in Holton, I can use that as our current business model, so we were right now four to nine on Wednesdays, four to nine on Thursdays, four to eleven on Fridays, and eleven to eleven on Saturdays.
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, you're closed.
In Holton, in Holton, we're not open, we feel, I feel that the Leavenworth market can actually support more days of the week, whether that's a Monday, Tuesday, I, I don't, I don't personally foresee a Sunday opening, that may be, again, I'd have to lean on my team back here to kind of steer me, they run the day-to-day in the taproom.
I'm gonna shoot that.
But I, I don't foresee a Sunday.
You just brought up something else, though, in my head, what about sports events, I mean, are you gonna have lots of TVs all around the, the taproom, or?
So, our current taproom, with our small eighteen hundred square feet, we actually have four, four main televisions at the bar and a big screen back in that little admin area, and then the guys are lucky with an additional one where, where they end up going to the restroom, we would be looking to do the same.
That's not gonna matter.
And we'd be looking at a very similar aspect of things, or there'd be a number of TVs throughout the facility.
Sundays might become important. I mean, seriously, some, a lot of folks I think you might attract on Sunday afternoons in the fall.
Yeah, during the chief season, yeah.
And, and Leavenworth is, is a different market, I mean, it's, with Holton being a small farming community, we really cater to that, to that market, we do feel that Leavenworth has a much stronger potential for, for additional foot traffic, on days where we're not, where we're not seeing it.
The military base right there.
Well, we, we have a lot of people who live downtown, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
I think my wife left a business card, so if anybody has any questions at any point in time, feel free.
Dishwasher, yes.
She left yours, so if we don't call her, we call you.
Dishwasher, Mr. Fixit.
She can answer the questions, I'll just make up the answers.
Thank you so much for that.
Lori Day, Lori Days is over Memorial Day weekend.
That's the Saturday Memorial Day. Come down, check it out, we'll actually be outdoor live music, we'll have some, some restaurants set up, outdoors catering, and...
And you got the TV in the bathroom.
There you go, we'll never see it again.
I'm so...
No, no, I know, I was teasing.
Exactly.
Thanks again. So I guess the next step, or the next question is, where, what's the next step, right? So, what I'll do is let you all, let the governing body determine if you need further information from either of the parties, I'll give you a couple of days to figure that out, hear from the public, and then we'll check in, if you need a little bit more time, then maybe a couple of weeks, so we'll just do that, and we'll keep everybody informed and put it out, of course, when it's going to be on in the next commission meeting, so.
Okay, that's right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Okay, any other questions or questions?
Nope. You know, just one thing, my mayor, just maybe if anybody's reaching out, asking for financial pieces or anything like that, let's just make, you know, my recommendation would be that it's just very black, white and clear, which group is asking for what, and what that's going to mean, financial impact on the city and stuff like that, because two different black and white proposals from a financial standpoint.
Right, right, no, good point, I didn't have anything else this evening either, so.
Alright.
We're adjourned.